You guys, okay. Hang on, let me talk to the mayor. Hello?
Hi, Nancy Michael.
Hi, Mayor. Good, how are you?
Could you just shoot me the link for the session? We'll close whatever we got now.
Sure.
Thank you, my email would be great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, all.
Hello.
Bill.
Give me everyone.
Good evening.
Nancy, let me know when you're ready.
I'm just pulling up the agenda.
Yep.
I don't have a paper copy either.
Oh.
Yeah, it's fun trying to do everything from home.
Yep.
We listen.
Hey, Wayne.
Yes.
Did you find out that information that I asked you about Galilee?
No, the woman I need to speak to, I haven't gotten to her yet. But I should, I'll know by this weekend. I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right.
Ready?
Yep.
I call this council meeting of November 24th, 2020 to order at 7:31 PM. Will everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the city clerk, please read the open publics meeting that.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the record and the Star Ledger and advertised in said newspapers on January 17th, 2020, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. A copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Please take notice and in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at seek, and local finance notice 2020-21, new emergency regulations, remote public meetings held during a declared emergency, issued by the local finance board on September 24th, 2020, and NJAC 5:39-1, emergency remote meeting protocol for local public bodies, establishing standard protocols. The City Council of the City of Englewood adopted Resolution Number 203-10-13-20, authorizing the remainder of the City of Englewood schedule of council meetings for 2020 to be held remotely via Zoom. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by clicking, by calling or clicking on the link below at 7:30 PM. Link is on our website or by dialing 929-205-6099. The meeting ID for this meeting is 82267, sorry, 8674-0685, and the passcode is 888783. Individuals calling into this number will be expected in the meeting, including providing public comments. Either by or someone has to have one device. At cityenglewood.org. All written comments shall be read during the public forum portion of same time limitations for public speaking. Duplicative comments shall be noted for the record and summarized. The agenda for the meeting can be found on the city's website at www.cityenglewood.org. A separate meeting will be used if closed session is required. Proper notice have been given. The municipal clerk is directed to include those statements in the minutes of this meeting.
The city clerk, please do the roll call of the city council.
Councilman Cohen?
Here.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Here.
Councilman Hamer?
Here.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yeah.
Council President Cobb?
Here.
Also present are Mayor Michael Wiles, City Attorney Bill Bailey, and Greg Farnback for interim city manager, Jewel Thompson.
Okay, first order of business is that we need a motion and a second for the approval of Resolution 230. And this is covering regular meeting minutes from June 27th, 2019, March 17th, 2020, April 21st, 2020, May 26th, 2020, workshop meeting, June 11th, 2019, May 5th, 2020, special meetings, June 11th, 2019, April 2nd, 2020, and April 30th, 2020. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
What is that, we getting feedback from somewhere?
Yeah, if someone has two devices on, it'll be feedback.
Can we do the roll call? We have a, we have a set, we have a motion, I believe it was Kat, and then Councilman Hamer.
Cohen.
Cohen, was it?
Cohen, second.
Okay, my mistake.
Want me to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes. I declare the motion carried and the minutes duly adopted, duly approved, excuse me. Now we have, we have a motion and a second bills and claims, Resolution 231 in the amount of $1,248,198.87. I need a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions? No questions? I have, I have two questions, I guess, is Mr. Volsey on? No?
No.
Mr. Cobb, Mr. Volsey indicated he had a personal problem this evening, was not going to be able to come to the meeting.
Okay, so maybe Mr. Kaufman, since he's here, he could probably answer these questions as well. One, he probably can't, but the, I had a question regarding, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I'm here.
Haring Field improvements?
Yeah, I'm not going to be exactly sure.
Okay.
I leave those usually for France, so I could, I could look into it and get back to you.
Okay, so, you know, I just want to make sure that I, and I think I understood that this work has been done. We have made the critical improvements to the Haring Field location that's across from the Jazz Dismas Middle School. And I believe that, I just wanted to know, was this the last payment on that?
I'll check on that.
Okay, because I know that the fields are in good shape and I saw them, they did something that has been worked on, I've asked for them to work on for a long time and they look like they've gotten it to a good place. The other thing, I got two other questions. One is, and you probably don't know this either, Mr. Kaufman, but you can talk to Mr. Volsey. Phase one striping, I guess it's on Broad Avenue for $9,828.55. And you probably won't, you won't be able to answer whether, what phase two is going to be.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I think we just need to know what phase two is, is, what he's considering, what does he consider? Is phase one done?
Charles, we discussed this at the traffic advisory and it's, it's in the report that I sent to you guys. What, when the phase one, what phase one is and what phase two is. I can go back and resend that if you'd like.
Okay, all right, I just, just want to make sure that, you know, and when does he think, and you make, I'm sure you may be able to answer this. Is this moving along, will you think it's moving along?
Um, yes, this is exactly, it's maybe a month behind where he said it would be. So phase two is not for, and not until next year.
Okay, so phase one to your, to your satisfaction and your understanding has been completed?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right, as long as you're, 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 you're okay with that and you know what it is, okay, that, that's, that's fine. And the last thing I have, Mr. Kaufman, Goose, Goose Town Communications, it's a rental, it says rental microwave for $4,182, $118.72?
That's their communication equipment, has to do with their communication equipment.
Okay, so it's not a microwave there?
No.
But it says, but it reads that, that's what it said.
That's what it's called, it has to do with that.
And, and that's something, that's something we're renting on a monthly basis or?
It's the monthly fee.
Okay, is this something new? I never saw that before.
No, we've had, we've had it on the bill.
We've had it?
Yeah.
And, and we have to rent this equipment, we can't lease it, we can't do something that's a little cheaper or whatever?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's the, it's the service, the microwave.
Okay.
It's the service that, that it goes with the walkie talkies and stuff like that.
Okay, okay, if nobody else has any questions, Nancy, we could do a roll call.
Sure.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Well, yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. So the motion has been carried, the bills and claims have been duly approved. Next, ordinances for public hearing and second reading, we have none. Ordinances for introduction and first reading, we have none. And now we have ordinances for anyone who wants to speak on ordinances 232 to 240. If anybody would like to speak on these resolutions from the public, you have to do so, state your name, address, and you have two minutes to speak, as we always remind people. It will be a respectful conversation in terms of that. And Nancy, do we have anybody who wants to come?
Just a reminder, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. At the bottom of the screen, there's a more button, there's raise hand on there. Just click on that and you will be placed into queue. No?
No one?
No.
Okay. So we can move to a motion to adopt resolutions 232, 233, 234, 235, 236, 237, and 238, and 239, and 240 by unanimous consent?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Nancy?
I wanted to ask that one of them be poll, please?
Which one?
239.
Okay.
239?
I need
Council whatever you're, Council President, but if you want to vote on the remaining ones, and I can give a brief overview of what 239 is all about.
Okay, all right, so we, we will, we will vote on 232, 233, 234, 235, 236, 237, 238, and 240.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Well, yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg? Councilwoman Rosenberg, oh, sorry, thank you, and Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. Um, 239, Bill, and these have been adopted.
Right.
Approved, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, the other, with respect to 239, just some quick background. The City of Englewood had a number of years ago gotten a judgment of compliance and reposed with respect to its affordable housing obligations, meaning that it had met the second, second or third round obligations and that was satisfied. We were in litigation, went to the appellate division and what have you. That judgment expired in May of 2019, so we're now dealing with the city's prospective obligation. We still have immunity, by the way, the court has been extending it. And if you may recall, earlier this year, the planner from TNM was hired to do a vacant land study, which was requested really by the judge hearing the case, who has appointed a special master who is also a planner. It's a pretty typical thing. This was authorized by the governing body and that plan in draft form has been done and submitted to the court-appointed special master. What's before you tonight is to essentially just continue TNM's service as planner in that lawsuit, which includes working with the special master on trying to come to some agreement on what affordable obligation the city may have going forward, credits for what it's done in the past, and also going through, it's called, it's court ordered mediation basically, which is essentially a discussion with the planner, the Fair Share Housing Center of New Jersey, which is a not-for-profit that advocates for low and moderate income housing. I think they're out of Cherry Hill. And it's all done under the auspices of the court. So what this is, is to authorize them to continue working with us on that case. They're already well into it, but and in terms of fees, just so everyone's aware, we have a, an affordable housing trust fund. By law, these fees can be paid out of that trust fund.
Move for adoption.
Who?
I move for adoption.
Ms. Glenn, does that answer your question?
It does, I just wanted, especially on the record, to have Bill's explanation of what we were voting on, because it just wasn't clear from the caption. So I appreciate that, thank you.
You need a second.
Oh?
Second is needed.
I'll, I'll second it. Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Well, yes.
Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes, resolution has been duly adopted. Next, we have items for discussion, and there's one item, business district zoning. I wanted to put that on there because I want to continue the conversation about the, the rezoning of the business district areas, especially focused on Dean Street, Van Bronn Street, and, and Mr. Bailey, we asked, we already had started that conversation about Palisades Court. And I want to make sure that this is a focus, because this will give some type of stimulus to those owners there as we allow them or look at what, what other types of options they may have, other kind of businesses that may could come into the business area. And I just wanted to continue that conversation and keep it alive, because unfortunately, by the time we do an ordinance or whatever, it will be in the first quarter of next year. But I wanted to, to focus on that because how important it is to the business owners and to their survival and to those property owners in terms of getting those empty spaces filled up. Does anybody else have any other comments around this?
I do, Council President, Mr. Bailey, it's directed to Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey, what do we need to do to kickstart that conversation so that, after the first of the year, we don't, don't waste a whole lot more time?
We should engage officially the services of a planner to really start bearing down and getting the benefit of their expertise and experience in terms of what they've seen throughout the state and ideas in terms of, for example, use requirements and maybe what uses could be permitted in an effort to try and mitigate vacancies and revitalize the downtown area. They would also help in terms of discussions with any bulk requirements that we've talked about. And just by way of example, Palisades Court, I did speak to one of their representatives in terms of them looking for some assistance from the city in terms of expanding the scope of uses that they're permitted to have in there. It's my understanding, I don't have specific details yet, but they've been approached by potential tenants whose uses might not have been permitted. I think some of them are actually, they've applied to the zoning board for variance, which could address those specific situations, but it's, it's something we might want to look at on a bigger basis to help the entire downtown area. And again, particularly in these times, take a fresh look at what uses we can get in there to enhance that and again, revitalize it and help that these business and property owners that have been impacted by what's going on in the world.
So is, if, so it's not to leave out the Hudson corridor and, you know, any other segment? Like, you know, there's a small number of businesses in Wyatt's Corner, but, you know, just on a, in a comprehensive way to look at how we do that and get input from, you know, the, actually to provide information to the property owners, because I think we ought to, you know, not necessarily we, but, you know, there should be some sort of input for, for property owners as to what types of businesses have the greatest opportunity for success and, and maybe even get some input from potential patrons. You know, the residents in town who would patronize those kinds of businesses to, you know, put a free flow of ideas so that, you know, we get the best options and, and the decisions can be made the right way so that we don't have businesses that come in and last for a short period of time before they have to shutter and get something that, that residents and frankly, visitors to Englewood get an opportunity to support and sustain. So, you know, we probably do need to figure out what kind of forum to set up so that we maximize this opportunity. It's a crisis, but, you know, out of this crisis, you know, hopefully some opportunity can come.
Right, so, so maybe we need to organize something with the CID, Chamber of Commerce, and others to come together to have some kind of meeting in terms of how do we engage people, what's the, and the planner to see what, like you said, what's best, what's the best fit for these, these spaces here? And some realtors who are out there in the market who have their finger on the pulse, because they could bring people in too as well. So I think that maybe we need to set something up to, to do that.
Yes.
Yes. I would, I would also add the planning board to the mix, which is charged capably substantively on dealing with planning for the city to see whether or not any master plan changes should be in order consistent with this. Just to report to the governing body, there were 35 vacancies in town yesterday. Two were cured before the Board of Adjustment, Mr. Bailey. Two businesses were given approval, an orthodontist to replace a burger joint and a podiatrist to replace a chiropractor in the Palisades Court corridor. And I think, Wayne, you're speaking words, wisdom here, because we have a Colombian district, we have a Korean series of stores in the border on Grand Avenue with Leonia. And it would be wonderful to get a conversation. We're still cutting ribbons and welcoming new businesses that despite a pandemic are investing in our city. And I think also I would charge the city lawyer and maybe the planning board lawyer to look at heights. We may be creating opportunities, but we may also be taking entitlements if people bought properties with an eye towards going higher. Not crazy heights, but higher than what the city council may ordain through an ordinance. So I think it would be wise to host it. I think the planning board would be the right venue. And if you task the planning board in the new year or even beforehand to start setting up committees, it could include the Chamber of Commerce, the Special Improvement District, a variety of realtors, I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. Cobb, because these are the people that are out there that are looking a day and night and we have to hear what the needs are. And frankly speaking, some of the people that are coming to town are just dumping their load and selling it from stores because they aren't doing handsomely elsewhere. So we also want to make sure code enforcement weighs in, so we don't have any messes on our hands in the central business districts. So frankly, I'm not proprietary, if you don't want the planning board to do it, I just would like the planning board to play a role so that if there are any commensurate master plan changes that have to be made, that we take that up in kind also.
So this, this will be, this will be more conversation around that, obviously. Bill, what we don't want to do is, I guess, we have to figure out our planning situation. Obviously, we have Stan doing planning for the city. He's going to be our planner for projects. You know, we have to determine the priority of our projects to do these things in an efficient way. We just can't carry so many things over that we could have gotten done as well. So I think that we just need to come up with a plan. So that's what we, I think we have to come to, we have to come to a plan for 2021. How are we going to deal with these issues? All right, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yeah, again, the first step in that is going to be hiring a planner.
Right, right, and I mean, that, that doesn't mean TNM has to do all our planning for us as much as well. Right. So we need to probably get some other recommendations for planners that focus solely on our needs for us to come back to us and we control the, the, the action in terms of that. And then sooner the better, so we can take care of the downtown and, and put some energy back in it. So if that, if that's the only item we have, then we could, we could move to communications from Mayor and Council. Mayor Wiles, excuse me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb. Their request was to have our auditor, Gary Vincy, on.
That's correct, I didn't see that, yeah, I forgot that Gary was here and we wanted him to give us an update on the audit report that he recently issued to the city. Mr., I believe he's on, he's on the phone, he doesn't, he's not visible.
No, I am, I am, Mr. President.
Okay, yeah, I know you're on the phone, yeah, I see.
So the, the audit that we provided, obviously, this year was delayed. We all know various reasons, pandemic, the closures, you know, staggered work schedules. But I think when you look at the city audit overall, it was financially very good. As I think the governing body is aware, the surplus, and remember, our audit covered through the end of 2019. Surplus wise was very healthy at $5.7 million. So our financial testing was very, you know, very good, very, all results came back positive. We had a few recommendations, nothing that is of a significant or material matter in our eyes. A couple of the items dealt with just processes. A couple of items dealt with just processes, procedures that need to be, you know, reinforced with department heads such as with procurement, understanding the purchasing system that the city has and following the directives from the Division of Local Government Services. We had a couple of items dealing with payroll reporting, payroll record keeping, and two minor ones with financial reporting, just with timeliness of some of the reporting. But I think overall, none of the items are significant, as I mentioned, and I've reviewed the recommendations with the interim city manager as well with Michael, your CFO. I know Michael has prepared a corrective action plan, which will address if all those practices are and procedures are implemented, you know, will address the recommendations that we have in the audit. So if there's questions on the audit, I'd be happy to entertain, you know, from the council.
Gary, with with those items that you noted and the correct the corrective action plan, you're going to come back in and do some type of sample testing, right? To ensure that that these things are to to validate that these things have taken place. Procurement and I remember that what is, didn't we have a finding on that before, prior finding on procurement?
Yes, we did. There were similar findings in the eighteen audit. That's why I think reinforcing the procedures with the department heads is very, very important. And obviously, this year, because of the pandemic and the fact that a lot of people are working remotely, you know, so many items may be repeating. I don't know. We haven't tested twenties, you know, transactions to date, but it's just a concern because we just are aware of everybody working pretty much remotely for several months. But it's it's not a impossible task to to remedy. It's just reinforcing again to make sure everybody's aware of the statutes of what the state requires, such as if the city entertains using a state contract or a national co-op, what needs to be documented, what needs to be provided to the finance office and what the governing body needs to be aware and vote on. So again, it's just reinforcing, I think, those items.
Well, I guess that that that's the apartment heads, that's Greg and and Jewel currently that they need to have those discussions with department heads and see, is is there a pattern, a particular department that's more than others or it's just, you know, all over the place?
I I don't see it. We didn't see a pattern per se. We just obviously test different areas and it was not a rampant one department that had the exceptions, as we call them.
All right, so I could.
I did. I did do, sorry, just interject. I did do last year in like November time. I did create a purchasing manual and I had I held a like a class in City Hall and I went over with all the departments and their staff that deal with this. I went over all the rules and regulations with them.
And you handed out the manual to everybody?
Yes, yes.
And they, okay, so maybe.
And once we have a new city manager.
Yeah. We have to go over that again to make sure that that's because that's a that's the repeat findings never is never is a good thing, right? Because they're saying is, how did that happen? And we understand because of how people are working, but you would think that if they're not sure that they would reach out to the department heads or whoever to confirm that they're doing it the right way. Gary, do you have anything else to report to us?
I would, yeah, I I do, Mr. President. Over the last couple of weeks, Michael and I have been working together to prepare a projection for this year's financial condition of the city. I think if you go back, we talked about this at one or two council meetings concerned about where the city's surplus will be at the end of twenty twenty. So we have been working on various projections. And there's actually a three year comparison that I believe the city council has. I think it was sent out late today. And I think tonight's a good opportunity to, you know, maybe go through that. I think Michael and I, you know, we can discuss that with you, discuss, I could discuss legal, you know, what the state is allowing municipalities to do. They came out with a directive only within the last month because they are obviously well aware of revenue shortfalls, expenses that municipalities are incurring and trying to provide budget relief. So I think maybe walking through the financials and then maybe we can touch on what action may be necessary for the council should they desire, you know, to seek budgetary relief.
Yeah, and and let us understand what are the pros and cons behind that relief and what it what what's the impact? If we do it that way, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael, do you want to start?
Sure. Should I go through? Okay. I sent the I'll just go through quickly the memo that I went that I sent to the council today. When in the previous meeting, I went through some options that the city has to do. One of them was transferring a hundred thousand dollars from the two thousand nineteen appropriations into a reserve that we approved today during the council meeting for storms. We could transfer that to there. The negative effect would be the only negative effect would be that if the the creating this reserve, the city's current fund surplus will be a hundred thousand dollars less than we would have had. So our surplus was five would have been five million. Now it'll be four point nine million, but we are still creating a reserve that will that will fund that. If there is a material adverse effect, like we would have to raise taxes because of this, then I will not fund the reserve. So only we'll only fund the reserves if we see that it's going to have, it's not going to have a material effect on the taxes. The same situation is with the funding the accumulated absences. We'll take surplus from two thousand, the appropriation reserves from two thousand and nineteen that this year would go into into fund balance. The same thing that we would fund the accumulated absences. And if we don't have, if if there would be a material adverse impact, we would, it doesn't have to be necessarily five hundred thousand. It could be up to five hundred thousand. We could do a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. So I'm going to work with the auditor. I'm going to work with the auditor, see what the numbers are going to be at the end of the year, and we can decide how much to put into those reserves. The last thing about canceling two thousand twenty municipal appropriations by the end of this year, we're probably not going to know until mid-December prior right right prior to the last meeting of two thousand twenty. And canceling some of that's appropriations will offset some of the revenue shortfalls that the city has. By creating this cancellation, surplus will increase at the end of twenty twenty for use in twenty one, but twenty twenty two will be taking away fund balance from the use in twenty twenty two budget. So we're affecting, we're increasing it for this year, but we're going to reduce it in twenty twenty two. Currently, the in the, if you look at the the auditors in a eighteen nineteen and twenty surplus, we are, we're going to, we're estimating that fund balance will be around nine hundred thousand dollars less than it was last year. If there are any questions regarding that, one thing we are allowed to do is a special emergency, which is due, we have to let the we have to do an application. We have to let the state know by December first. We could still do a resolution and ordinance. We could adopt that in December. Most communities, the communities that are doing these special emergencies rely a lot on, let's say, hotel tax or fees, parking, which for us, they're going down. Those are the three main fees that are have been going down because of the coronavirus. Anything that we, any special emergency that we do do this year, we will have to pay back in from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. So it's a six year period. So let's say we do a special emergency for one point two million. It will be two hundred thousand dollars a year. We have to raise in the budgets from two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty seven.
So so to so to do these things is, that's basically a last resort because we got to pay this back. It's not like somebody's giving us any money.
Exactly.
No, it's no different than floating bonds.
It's pushing, it's like, it's, we're paying it back and it's like taking a, it's basically taking a special emergency note like we did with
Right.
We did with a humidity absences a few years ago. We're we're paying back now two hundred thousand dollars every year.
Right. So if if so, if we don't have to do this, then we don't do it.
Yes.
It's an option, basically, for us, if need be, if need be. And 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 I'd like to get Gary to opine on this as well. Gary, your thoughts?
Sure. So let me just backtrack just to make sure you clearly understand how Michael was expressing the reserve funding.
Right.
So keep in mind, your budget, like every other municipal budget lasts two years. So when Michael's talking about budgets lapsing to surplus, he's actually talking about the twenty nineteen budget. Because at the end of the second year, which is twenty twenty, whatever is not spent automatically goes to surplus. So the surplus net of the reserves or the the transfer net of the reserves is about one point five million. If the two reserves are not funded, then two point one million will lapse surplus. So the application, as Michael said, is due by December one. The state issued a application that needs to be submitted only a few weeks ago. And the action that is required would be for the council in December to approve a special emergency resolution and also an special emergency ordinance, which requires two readings, introduction and final reading and adoption. Since and most towns are experiencing filing the application before the governing body takes action, the only thing the city would need to do would be to ask the state for a one month extension of the December one application due date, because what we found out today is that the state does not want the application until the governing body takes action and they're willing to accept it later on in December. They just want one package. Now, by submitting the application, you're basically buying yourself some time to further evaluate the financial impact. The application is basically an insurance policy. You can actually in January or February next year, decide not to go through with the special emergency and you could pass a resolution to cancel it. But for you really, in today today's situation, you would need to file the application basically to provide a budgetary relief, which would reinstate the revenue shortfall. So if you're estimating the shortfall to be one point two, as Michael mentioned, the special emergency would be for one point two, basically bringing your surplus back up to a little bit more than where you ended up at the end of nineteen. That's what the state is allowing towns to do this year because of the pandemic. So I I think submitting the application makes sense. It gives you flexibility. It allows you to, you know, continue to review your financial condition. And as you prepare for twenty twenty one's budget development, you you will see where obviously your expenses are as well as other revenue sources. You know, I think we have to keep in mind too that the numbers in the state are spiking again. And the question is, what will happen in the first quarter of twenty one? We don't know the impact with the revenues that you struggled with this year, hotel tax, parking fees. So if there are additional executive orders issued by the governor, it may be another problematic first quarter. We don't know that, but at least you have time to review that.
But I think this is a little surprise to us to take an action tonight, which I'm not so comfortable in doing this right off the flyer because I don't think we react like that. But with with that being said, I just want to ask Mr. Bailey something. Mr. Bailey, are are we getting some monies from our settlement?
Which settlement? The ERA settlement?
Correct.
Yeah, but that's not until they get COs for the project, so.
Okay, so that's a while. That's down the road.
Yeah, that's three and a half million dollars, but it won't be until the COs are issued. Yeah.
May I ask a question, Mr. Cobb?
Yep.
The hotel tax and parking fees, Gary, that you're referring to. You're suggesting that the council can raise an ordinance raising those fees now in anticipation of the revenue losses that we anticipate?
Right. So what the state is allowing, they call it a special emergency. So with a revenue shortfall in whether it's parking, whether it's in recreation, whether it's in court, because that was another significant area. The ordinance basically is the amount corresponding to the revenue shortfall and that amount of money will be raised in future budgets. Doesn't start in twenty twenty one. They're giving I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're not raising the fees though. You're not raising the the fees, like how much you're going to charge. Is that what the mayor?
We 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 understand that. We we're just talking about the revenue part of it.
So.
Right, so. Okay, I'm I'm sorry, Merritt. Go ahead.
No, clarify what it means. Can we raise hotel tax and parking fees in anticipation of to to offset our revenue?
Okay, so in a municipal budget, when you have a special emergency, let's use the number of two hundred thousand. Say your emergency is one million dollars. You have a five year window to raise it. By raising it, what you're doing is you're not raising fees, you're not raising revenue. You you have an appropriation in your budget called a special emergency COVID nineteen appropriation that is for two hundred thousand dollars starting in year twenty twenty two and continuing through twenty twenty six. So the money is part then of the city's budget, similar to how the city had to raise money for the accumulated absence special emergency of maybe five years ago, four years ago. So it's basically funded, it's an appropriation, offset by all the other revenues and taxation of the city. So you're not increasing the hotel tax, you're not increasing the parking garage fees. What you're doing is you're taking their deficit and basically creating an appropriation and funding it over five years, which is offset, as I said, by either all other sources of revenue of the city.
So you're taking the deficit that the that's anticipated in hotel and the parking fees and you're creating an appropriation, but you're bonding something that the taxpayers are then ultimately going down the shoulder.
Or other or other sources of revenue. That's correct.
Okay.
So it's it's an evaluation that.
Can you designate the other sources of of revenue as opposed to bonding it and from taxpayers if we have a development project? We keep saying you can't tax your way through development, but is this emergency appropriation permitted to do it based on development that comes into the city?
So if the city benefits from a development where you have now other fees, whether it's a pilot, whether it's just other fees being collected, you will increase the revenue from those sources. So So technically, you can say you have a settlement that's increasing revenues of 100,000. You're taking that, offsetting that against the 200,000.
Oh, good. So it doesn't have to be on the shoulders of taxpayers.
No.
Necessarily. And we're not increasing hotel and tax, but you're you're taking their deficit and you're creating this appropriation, but you can take it from another source. Thank you.
Or reduce or reduce expenses. That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Greg, would you weigh in on that? Would you like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, the the first thing to understand is that this legislation is, I think, about six or seven weeks old. The regulations came down about three weeks ago. And a lot of people only learned about this within the last two, two and a half weeks. And it was the subject of a couple of discussions at last week's League of Municipalities sessions. When a municipality does a master plan, for example, they will do this special emergency. And it's used for the purposes of paying off a an approved cost in the statute. But the new legislation put it on the other side and they now are allowing it to be used for essentially covering a deficit in revenues in 2020 by either borrowing money internally or going out into the marketplace and borrowing money and then being able to pay it back over as much as a five-year period. And the way Gary explained it is exactly correct. And I think you should think of this at the moment simply as an insurance policy. That Michael doesn't know, Gary doesn't know, Jewel and I don't know what the exact circumstances are going to be for 2021. But you want to give yourself the opportunity to utilize this mechanism later on, along with other alternatives that you end up discussing and choosing to be able to deal with the deficit that occurred in these revenues in 2020. An alternative to this, if the law hadn't been adopted, would have been that you would have had to have entered into cutback management. And cutback management may have meant reducing services, reducing staff, not buying certain things, eliminating certain leases, whatever methods you may have used to reduce expenses. Those alternatives still exist for all of you going into 2021. But if you authorize the finance officer to file the application or to at least prepare the application now, prepare the resolution and the ordinance for council consideration at their, I think it's December 8 meeting. All you're doing is you are establishing a insurance policy so that in the event you need to use it in February or March, you have the ability to do so. But if you don't need it because you've chosen to use other means, you can then void the authorization for the borrowing. Gary, do you disagree with anything I just said?
No, Greg, I I agree 100%.
Anybody else have any comments?
I did. Council President, I guess this is directed to Greg and Gary. Is this akin to establishing a cat bank?
No. A cat bank is is completely different. And your issue here is that you've had a shortfall in revenues in 2020 that are going to affect 2021 to some extent. And you may have shortfalls in 2021 that'll end up affecting 2022. This permits a method that has never been authorized previously of a municipality to be able to anticipate a deficit and find a way to spread it out over a number of years instead of having to take the hit in one year. I'll just give you one simple example. In 1991, the municipality I was in had a significant shortfall of revenue because of an inaccurate billing of a utility. The municipality had to take the responsibility for that complete shortfall in one year. And that resulted in about an 8% layoff of staff and significant cutbacks in other expense appropriations. Because this method of being able to spread it out over five years didn't exist. You now have this authorization under the statute. And while personally, I may or may not be in favor of utilizing it. I think from the standpoint of flexibility and from the standpoint of your collective choices in 2021, you want to create this insurance policy to give you choices. You may choose not to use it. In the end, the governing body is going to have to make that decision because neither the city manager nor the finance officer have the right to be able to borrow money without a city council authorization to do so.
Okay, thank you. So I I know we're going to have to be flexible and come up with creative ways to to handle our our revenue shortfalls for this year and next year, and hopefully it ends next year. But we do need to, you know, have every tool in the in the box that are at least available to use. And that doesn't mean that we have to use it, even if we decide to move forward with, you know, filing the application. So I do think that's the the right approach. But what I I do prefer is that instead of just getting a summary sheet of of what our surplus looks like, you know, we probably should have gotten some sort of summary, short summary from at least the CFO, if not the, you know, the auditor to explain what it is that we're being told tonight. And, you know, and not that it has to be binding, but at least it 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 paints a a better picture exactly what it is that we're we're walking toward and being asked to to support. So I'm I'm not a big fan of, you know, the the last minute stuff. And and I know this is not last. Well, this this part is last minute. The information came a couple of, you know, just short of a couple of months ago and it's being formulated. But, you know, if if we're going to be asked to, you know, at least I look at it this way. If we're going to be asked to, you know, shoulder some more debt or potentially look at it that way, then I I think we just need to get a little bit more clarity and, you know, nothing that we're talking about is in writing here. You know, the only thing we got was, you know, these projections for 2018, 19 and, you know, this year, I think from Michael today. And, you know, this is way too important for us, you know, to to go on, you know, just conversation as opposed to, you know, something in front of us in black and white. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'm just sending out the notice from the state that was received on the 18th to everybody.
Okay. I I agree with Councilman Hamer. I think we should have a recap of this this in writing. We should understand what this means and 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 very simple terms. Because what what I'm hearing is you're asking us to give permission to the CFO tonight to put together this application and a resolution for us to act on at the December 8 meeting. And somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, if that's what we're saying tonight.
And there's also an ordinance.
And there's also.
It's actually three things that the division requires.
So it's three things that are required. We should know all three things. We should know what this means and how it's paid and the terms of it. It should all be laid out for us in writing so that we understand it and be prepared to speak to this at the December 8 meeting.
Excuse me, Council President, Mr. Bailey. Does this give us enough time to act on an ordinance? You know, if we've got to have a introduction and a public hearing, doesn't that take us over the end of a year, which we can't do?
I think we got an extension, they said.
I actually spoke to Mr. Vincy earlier today and other than the usual 10-day period in between introduction and adoption, it's seven days for this particular ordinance. So it could be introduced on the 8th and adopted on the 22nd. I don't know if they did it that way, recognizing the time constraints they're putting municipalities on, but I'm not sure. But I believe Mr. Vincy also talked to bond counsel who confirmed that.
Okay.
Right, but this last part, you know, that we're finding out this this application, this is what we try to avoid all the time. And if I I hear what you're saying, but I'm not comfortable the way we have to act, just like that. And we definitely need to have a more in-depth conversation around this. So what is the what is the request tonight, Mr. Vincy? Well, Mr. Kaufman or?
I think the request tonight, Mr. President, is to authorize the application to the state for budgetary relief because of shortfall in revenues experienced in 2020. The application due date is December 1. The actions, the legal actions that need to take place, though, would be December 8, which is a resolution, a special emergency resolution, as well as the introduction of a special emergency ordinance. Because the appropriation is funded over a multi-year period. So the the state requires an ordinance. So the the introduction would take place December 8. Published, Nancy, I don't know how quick publication would be with a ordinance. I don't know how soon that can be published. And then the hearing would be on December 22.
Okay, so let me just go back. December 1. So what you were saying is tonight, what you're looking for is to say, okay, you can fill out the application and submit it, if I understand that's what you're saying.
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm going to ask, I guess, the the jar breaking question. If we knew this prior, how come we weren't informed prior to that about the application process?
It actually, the application just came out, I think, within the last two weeks. They issued a finance notice and the application we only received from DCA because it's their template. We've only received it over the last few weeks. And I think knowing, because one of the issues, and as Michael mentioned earlier, you don't have to submit the application or you can submit it and you can evaluate what actions you want to do with the two reserves that Michael mentioned earlier tonight. If if the target surplus is down $900,000, you may decide that 2020 is not the year to fund the two reserves. So you would then redirect the $600,000 back into your regular surplus, which would then bring your variance in surplus from one from 19 to 20 down to 300,000. So the memo that Michael sent to the governing body mentioned about funding the storm recovery reserve.
Right.
As well as the accumulated absence reserve.
Right.
You don't have to fund those. That was just a proposal. And it was asking for confirmation that if the governing body was comfortable to allow him to start funding the reserves. You may decide and maybe a collective discussion that, you know what, 2020 may not be the year to set aside money in other reserves. And we may need to defer funding those reserves until you get a handle on your 2021 budget as well as the economy in 2021. So when I mentioned earlier about canceling the application, yes, you can submit that. You can take action in December. And you may decide not to fund the reserves after looking at your financials and based on input from the CFO. And then you may cancel the special emergency. You may decide in January, February, this is not the time to do it. Let's let's not go ahead with the special emergency.
Well, I I guess when budgets are so tight like that, right? We would consider not funding these things if we don't have excess revenues to do that, right? And where would that take us right now, off the top of your head, if we decided not to fund those two areas?
Your surplus would be roughly 300,000 less than where you ended up at the end of 19. At the end of 19, you had 5.7 in surplus. If the two reserves are not funded, your surplus would be approximately 5.4 if all the other assumptions are accurate with the projection. So you're you're closing that $900,000 gap. And that may be the the way to go.
And remember, two years ago, a few years ago, our surplus was down to 3.2 million. So we're still in pretty good shape to what it was a few years ago.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes, please.
I would just like to say that I think we can't emphasize enough how many unknowns we have in 2021. You know, there's, you know, vaccine and there's all this good news, but the the truth is, nobody really knows. And I think it was Gary alluded to before, we don't know what executive orders may come through that will further depress our entire economy, you know, locally and in the county and in the state. So it seems to me that to to opt into something that you can easily opt out of when you have maybe a better picture of what things are going to be on the ground in in 2021 is something we would definitely want to take advantage of, especially since we're not bound to it. There's flexibility in it.
Okay, anybody else? You have any, Charles? You have anything about that?
I'm in favor of of giving ourselves flexibility, not knowing what's coming and the next council. I think Charles is frozen.
I hope so.
Or he's really mad at me.
I think frozen. I think frozen. So in terms of course of action, Bill, Greg, what, what do we need to do? We need to provide authorization to move forward with the the application and then we tee up the resolution and ordinance for, for December eighth?
At this point, I would think what you're doing is just authorizing them to proceed to prepare the paperwork. So you can act on it on December eighth unless you decide you don't want to.
Fair enough. Cheryl, you're next in line here, so why don't you lead us out of this?
Sure, we are gonna hear comments from the mayor and council. Mayor?
I'm sorry, do we, do we need to take action on authorizing the application or what do we, what do we do with regard to what we just discussed?
I thought we were doing that on next meeting.
I think we need a motion and second, maybe, Bill, to authorize them to move forward.
Sorry, Michael?
I mean, as long as the council is okay, we, does that have to be official? Because we're just, we're doing the application that we're not doing the resolution or the ordinance. We need all three to move on to do anything, so I don't know if that has to be official.
Yeah, I don't know if we need a formal motion, but my sense is there's a consensus to at least prepare the documents.
Should we do a straw poll?
Act on, yeah. Or not on December eighth.
Fine, exactly.
Yancy, can we do a straw poll?
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Well, yes.
And Councilwoman Rosenberg?
Yes. We are informally agreeing to move forward and we will formalize this at the next two council meetings, it sounds like.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna have comments from the mayor and council now. Mayor Wilds?
Thank you and welcome, everybody. I see we have 22 participants and thirteen, yeah, thirteen attendees. So first of all, just a brief thank you to Gary and to Michael for their hard work. Not easy times, but being up by Greg and Drool on all of the new ordinances and regulations and edicts coming from Trenton is very important and helpful. As we said before, there are thirty five vacancies, ladies and gentlemen, and we're looking to make sure that we fill the divide properly and I'm glad that the council has set this important matter on the agenda. I would like to congratulate Frank Luciana, Englewood's favorite veteran who joined us November eleventh when we livestreamed a Veterans Day service from City Hall. Again, sorely missing Olga Mascaro, the young lady who took us from having no event to a hallmark event. And we're going to be honoring her in a great way next season and her beautiful family in the Triangle Park. November seventeen, we had a stigma-free virtual town hall. I'd like to thank the Health Department for their stellar leadership, making sure in a pandemic that we never forget minds and challenges that people are facing. Thank you to our Englewood bravest, our fire department for a food drive at ShopRite on November twenty one. To two citizens very special, Isaiah Jefferson and of the Circles of Color Organization and Magali Matos, who are trying to mask up Englewood. Again, a wonderful initiative in the city of Englewood. Magali has asked Mr. Cobb and I in an email right before the meeting if we would override the council, the city manager and put up a mask on the monument that was deemed to be a hazard for traffic. But the point was well taken that we want everybody to heed the call as the numbers increase. Our hospital is stepping up. They have staff, they have PPE, they're ready for the onslaught, but we can reduce the wave, as it were, by masking up. I also want to thank ShopRite. I made some inquiries. There was an inquiry of Wayne Hamer and myself with regard to whether or not ShopRite can do better. There, ShopRite's in nine states, not one of them hands out gloves and measures are in place, regulations and executive orders as to how food stuffs can be conveyed to the public. And they are in compliance. Thank you to Catherine Melendez for helping us roll out the smart nine one one, Englewood's real-time alerts, keeping the city informed during emergency circumstances. Anybody in the old Nixel system will be automatically placed into the new system. Congratulations to First and Third Ward Elections, Dr. Rosenzweig and Ms. Maron. Look forward to working with you. You have deep shoes to fill and again, congratulations to a handsome win. A centennial birthday to two of Englewood's residents, Ms. Leola Williams, who on November twelfth turned a hundred years old and Ms. Willam May Shiro, mother of our judge, also on November sixteenth. Happy birthday to about four hundred, fourteen hundred registered voters. And sad greetings and condolences to Police Sergeant Sean Carnahan, who lost his dear mother, Lenore Chiaveli, former Englewood City Clerk. Just a real good person and friend and in the same spirit as we celebrate Yancy's extraordinary work. She was somebody that will be sorely missed. I also would like to add my regrets and condolences to an old friend, a fellow friar and a lawyer that I hosted. A former mayor that I hosted in my home, David Dinkins, who passed away earlier today. He was a friend to many communities, the only African-American mayor that we had in the city of New York. And he worked very hard his entire life to see that justice would be served. I had a personal relationship and respect for him and again, condolences to his dear family. Upcoming events are a little contrived and different because of the pandemic. On December sixth, there'll be a Christmas tree lighting with no program. It'll be livestreamed on December seventh. We will be hosting a career in public services Zoom hosted on the Englewood Library, Facebook and Zoom. Where we will be hearing from Merrill Simmons, from James Fedarko and from Jewel Thompson Chin, city manager, health director and a recreation czar telling young people a series that we've developed now in the library, trying to encourage people to have a career in public service. So again, December seven, join us. There will be no program, again, a livestream menorah lighting on December thirteen, as I recall, there is a toy drive that the Englewood PBA has rolled out today. All of the flyers are posted in social media. I am asking for ten residents because I'm not allowed to have more than ten people in my home to help come to my home tomorrow evening if anybody would like to help package up gifts. And then in a socially distant way, we will be giving them out at the Englewood Housing Authority on Thanksgiving Day. This is something that I did before I was mayor, in between my mayor runs and everything else. Again, we will be giving out ShopRite gift cards and other paraphernalia to residents in a thoughtful way. I would also like to ask anybody who would like to join in a special memorial lecture for my mother, Ruth Wilds, who passed away twenty five years ago, US Senator, former Senator Joseph Lieberman. A gentleman of the first order will be joining us in a Zoom session. Information is on public social media. Also, for any of those things that you're missing, please join us every Friday in the library's Facebook or in Zoom page for Coffee with the Mayor, where I can give you a debriefing on all the issues that come up and we have special guests and members of the council and the different departments that join us from time to time. Just a brief final word of Thanksgiving to Englewood's finest, its bravest, our ambulance service, our first responders and to all the members of the city council and the people who work so hard at City Hall, our public works and all the departments, our city attorneys and financial staff. The vaccine is slated to be in New Jersey as reported one hour ago by Pfizer in mid-December. Many people consider this to be the beginning of the end of the pandemic and it's going to be a bumpy ride as we wind that turn. May we be thankful for one another, may we have everybody in one another's prayers and may we use this time, these pandemic historic times to make Englewood even stronger than it is. May God bless you and each of your families with only blessings.
That's good.
Good evening, everyone. I will be very brief this evening. I don't want to take time unnecessarily. I wanted to comment that about yet another traffic accident on the corner of Tannenfly Road and West Hudson. I think that's a total of three that we've had in the past so many weeks. Though the prior one involved a hitting a pedestrian, a fourteen-year-old girl. So I'm very concerned about this kind of hotspot of car accidents. And I assume that the traffic committee is not probably going to meet in the next few weeks. So I'm wondering if the city manager could do some investigation and let us know if, you know, my understanding with the pedestrian incident was it was sunglar. And, you know, is there something we can do about that this time of year? That can be very challenging, but whatever tools we have, we should take advantage of because three in so many weeks is, is pretty scary stuff. Other than that, I would just want to wish all our residents and all our employees a very happy Thanksgiving. Please be smart and be safe and so we can celebrate another Thanksgiving next year. So best to all.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenberg?
Welcome back, Charles. It was scary in your absence. I wanted to just take a moment to say on the eve of Thanksgiving or almost the eve of Thanksgiving, how thankful I am for all of the volunteer and nonprofit groups in Englewood who are doing an incredible job to help get the city through this crisis. I am going to mention a few. I know I'm going to miss some people. Others can fill in with the things that they know. But really, I just wanted to say we're grateful to all the nonprofit leaders in Englewood who are feeding people, keeping them safe, keeping the city clean, you know, making sure people have food and toys and everything they need for the holidays. I know that Rotary and Age Friendly and Cecil are doing a coat drive through December twenty third. Table to Table has been feeding people every single week and they are now taking over some other feeding programs that have come to an end. Magali Matos and a number of other volunteers have contributed to a mask up campaign that has, has encouraged people to stay safe in Englewood. I know the fire department did a food drive with Center for Food Action. There's lots of amazing things going on in the city. People are helping out in all sorts of ways. And so I just wanted to say thank you and wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Cole?
I just wanted to, you know, you know, wish a happy and healthy Thanksgiving to everybody in Englewood, to all of our, and also to all of our, you know, everybody who was working for our city, who's keeping it going. You know, through the pandemic and all the difficulties and, and whatnot, you know, we still see our city continuing and continuing to provide services in the best way we possibly can. You know, the department heads who have allowed that to happen and to all of their staffs who have, who have been the backbone of the city, just you know, it's time to say thank you and have a happy Thanksgiving to all.
Mr. Hamer?
Just a couple of quick things. Just want to say congratulations to Dr. Mary Elena Vargas, who's joining our Board of Health. She's incredibly qualified and I know she's a hard and passionate worker. So I think we all benefit by having her there. I'd also like to thank each and every resident of Englewood who took the time and responsibility for voting. Nobody should ever say again that my vote doesn't count. You and eighty million of your, your fellow citizens in this country, you know, proved that you, you had issues with what was going on and you did something to change it. So thank you for doing what you've done. And lastly, just as others have said, have a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. You know, make sure you spend whatever time on Zoom or on a conference call, but not in person with, you know, the people you love so that you can continue to love them, you know, after this mess is over. God bless.
Thank you. I think everybody has said a lot of the same things that I'm going to say. I just want to address a couple of issues and then, you know, we can move on. One of the things I wanted to address and I hope I've clarified it by speaking to the folks that were concerned about an RFP process. This was just the first step. And we had to have that process to hire somebody. Now we'll have other conversations as we try to move this topic along. So, and I would stress that anybody who has any questions, please contact me directly with that. Now we'll explain that to, to you, but this is clearly the actions that this governing body had to take. So I just wanted to make sure and we will do everything publicly and it will be very transparent. Everything we do and we will have the public engagement. So I just wanted to say that I wanted to recognize the Bergen Family Center has quarantine cadets and they were on Rachel Ray. They were led by a gentleman who's a celebrity chef that actually lives in Englewood named Aaron Marcy. So was very entertaining for those who have seen that. And I believe Kyle Rossa has sent to us an email that that you could see the video of them and they're very, it gave, it brought a lot of attention to Englewood and, but also shows how creative the young folks are being during this, during this pandemic time. And I think that that's important, you know. I, I just want to thank everybody, I think somebody's already said that, in the city of Englewood for their efforts or trying and all the volunteer groups, all of them. And there's probably more than I can remember. And everybody pitching it, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers and to all of you and to the work. And, you know, and as much as we're given, we still have much more to do. We got to keep people safe. We gotta stay focused on running a city and moving the city forward. And I, and I think that we're in for some bumpy patches if this thing continues to spike. So we just have to be prepared and provide the best services possible. I mean, I, when you look back on 2020, you can look at it and Englewood Services, we continue to execute those. Even with City Hall being closed, people working from home, we still continue to run the city and, and we'll be having a new city manager joining us that will help us work to continue to do that and to roll out those services. So I just want to thank everybody and I want everybody to be safe and practice safety. As I believe Councilman Hamer says, don't try to have too many people in your home. Have them on Zoom so you can have them for next Thanksgiving and this Christmas and beyond. So I just want to thank everybody and wish everybody a great, a great Thanksgiving. And I, there's something else I have to say, but I just, I think I forgot it. I didn't write it down. But I'll catch you at the next council meeting. Mr. Farrabont?
A couple of points, Mr. Cobb. The governor has signed Executive Order two hundred, which once again extends the health emergency declaration for another month. The order has to be renewed every thirty days and we anticipate, as has been said a couple of times so far, that these extensions will continue for several more months. The city of Englewood, serving in its capacity as an employer, is diligently pursuing compliance with all of the executive orders that have come down directed toward maintaining a healthy and safe workplace for all of the employees and for those people needing to do business with the city. with the city. Though the city has had to cancel its traditional holiday celebrations, the downtown Christmas decorations will be put into place to help brighten the mood of the season, and free parking will be in effect after Thanksgiving and through Christmas and Hanukkah. We encourage all the city's residents to support our local businesses for their holiday shopping. On behalf of Jewel Thompson Chin and the entire staff of the city, we want to wish all those participating and attending this meeting a happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully it will remain safe for all of those in the city experiencing Thanksgiving this year. Thank you.
I have one other point. I remember the Elks, the Elks Club on 17 Bennett Road on Wednesdays and Saturdays now will be handing out food from 3:30 to 5:30 on Wednesdays, and 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays. So tomorrow, if you need a little extra, you can go on over there. I believe on Saturday, this past Saturday, they handed out 200 boxes of food. I just wanted to make sure I said that. Thank you. And one other thing, Mr. Bailey, when I had a bad internet connection and I lost internet connection, what action did we take?
We did a straw poll, council president, just to allow us to prepare the documents.
Okay.
Governing body can decide December 8th whether or not they want to act on them and so on, just that it's there, and it will be done in case, regardless of what direction the council wants to go.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because I wasn't, I wasn't here. So now we can open it up to public session. You have name, address, two minutes to speak. Nancy, you could give them the directions in terms of where they have to get your attention.
You're on mute, Nancy. Nancy.
Sorry, I was looking for my clock on my phone, so I could do the timer. Okay, so if anyone needs to speak, at the bottom of your screen, there's a more button. Press that, there's a raise your hand, press that, and you will be put into queue to speak. First hand up is Jack Silberman. Let me just do the stopwatch here. Jack, you have to unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays. These are my two minutes, Wells, ask the questions, and you can decide if you're going to answer. I wanted to ask if Bill Bailey had sent you an email on Wednesday regarding some rules situations about how the EEE spends its own money with its own checking account? Are you going to be able to get to that anytime soon to research it for us?
Yeah, I'd need to reach out to the auditor and the CFO.
Okay. And Nancy, I had asked if I was going to be able to get the copies of the checking and two accounts we have?
Yeah, working on it, Jack.
Okay. And last thing, wanted to ask about if the city is going to be considering doing anything with yard debris that has to do with like sticks, small sticks and wood that falls even after October 31st of each year, when there's going to be no, there's no further yard debris pickups until April? If you're going to be, because I've got some now, and of course, I can store it. When I talked to the DPW again, this is brought up last year, that we were told to put it in the trash, and that's not, we've heard that a lot of people were told that, and I was told that today again, it's illegal to do that. And I mean, I can do it, I can hide, it's no problem, but I think because of my role on the EEC, I should be, I'm trying to encourage the city to be doing the right thing in matters like this. So I think it proves the city council to come up with a way with the DPW to pick up, to have something once a month, maybe during the wintertime, to pick up debris as it's, when it's falling, maybe by appointment. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is Connie, or if I mispronounce your name, Connie Trong. You have to unmute yourself. Connie, you have to unmute yourself. Connie? Just experiencing technical.
I got it, I'm sorry. I haven't been in a webinar. Hi, Connie Trong, and I just, I was wondering if ShopRite or the major grocery stores, if they could provide gloves for all the shoppers, just to prevent the spread of the virus. H Mart does that, and I think it's a really smart idea, and I'm wondering if Englewood can do the same thing? If we can have, when we enter stores, we all wear gloves?
I can answer that if you'd like, Mr. Cobb.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
I can answer that, Connie. Pleasure to meet you. We, I saw the email early this morning from you. I spoke to one of the owners of ShopRite, and he told me ShopRite's in nine states, and they have, they don't give out gloves. People can buy gloves if they want to give. The only protocols that's in place are for the governor, that requires face shields and certain gloves to be worn in certain circumstances, but they've determined that this is an airborne contagion and that they're in full compliance. So again, the city of Englewood cannot enact an ordinance that contravenes a mandate from the governor, and we can't require a proprietor to do something that would not be scientifically necessary, and if people feel that they would like to only handle things with gloves, they can purchase gloves or bring their own gloves. That said, there was a procurement of more than 50,000 masks and lots of gloves from a lot of different charities in town, and if you call our Health Department, you'll get word where to get them, and they'll deliver them, or you can pick them up from them as well. I think the young lady left us, Yancey.
Okay, yes. Yes.
Sorry, I keep coughing, so I keep unmuting myself.
Okay.
I think she.
For two minutes perhaps, so I.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I looked into it, and it would be prohibited for them business-wise.
Okay, yes.
Want me to put her back in, or you want to go to the next person?
Go to the next person. I think Michael's answered the question.
Yeah. Connie, put her hand back up. Sorry, Connie, you only had two minutes, and there are, no one else has their hand up right now.
Okay. We're going to go to a closed session?
Sorry, Diane Jansen just put her hand up.
Okay.
Diane?
Hi, Diane Jansen, 589 Ridgeland Terrace. Two things. The first one is thank you to everyone that I did get to speak with and the people I didn't get to speak with regarding the Leonia roadblock cases, we like to call it here on Englewood Isle. We really appreciate the council going forward as an intervenor on that case, and we do like the fact that Judge has said that while it's unlikely, in the event that the Borough of Leonia seeks to enforce Leonia ordinances, numbers 2018-14, 15, and 17, the New Jersey Department of Transportation and Englewood shall have the right to immediately apply before this court for emergent relief to enjoin and restrain Leonia from further enforcement thereof. And we appreciate what all of you have done, that you've gone out there for us, for the residents, and also for what we feel are civil rights to travel freely from town to town. We understand that Mayor Ziegler and the Borough of Leonia is appealing the Department of Transportation decision that they cannot enforce their proposed rules. Well, we'll see where that goes, but thank you very, very much. Take the other one. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, we go to, we're going to close the public session? Nancy?
No one else has their hand raised.
Okay, we're going to close the public session. Mr. Bailey.
Yes, sir. Be resolved by the governing body, the city of Englewood, that a meeting closed session pursuant to subsection seven of the Public Meetings Act that discuss litigation matters within the attorney-client privilege, be further resolved discussion conducted in closed session, can be disclosed to the public upon taking final action thereon, provided it does not constitute undue invasion of privacy or violate the attorney-client privilege, and be further resolved that the, while it is not envisioned that the council will return to a session to take any action, it will do so simply to adjourn the meeting.
Sorry, I missed what the purpose of the closed session was.
Litigation and matters within the attorney-client privilege.
So we got to go to the email you sent us today, Nancy, right?
Yeah, we need motion and second first.
We need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Just in all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going into closed session.
Okay, everybody has to exit, so I can exit.